Madam Chair, thank you. I see our commissioners are joining. And we're ready to get started whenever you are.
Thank you, Alethea.
Ms. Shanita, can you go live, please? We're live now.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My apologies, our apologies for joining this meeting late. Please accept our apology. We ran over our last meeting. Good afternoon. My name is Deion Bussie Reader, Chairwoman of the Board of Commissioners. I call this meeting to order. This is our regularly scheduled meeting that we hold every month. Today is November the 9th. This meeting is being held via WebEx Video Conference. The time is now 1:19 PM. If you are not speaking, please ensure you place your devices on mute. Thank you. I will first like to ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. Those of you guys have the copy of our agenda and the resolutions that we will be discussing, excuse me, the resolutions that we will be discussing today, I would like to ask Alethea at this time to do a roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover? Commissioner Slover there? I see his name, but I don't hear response. I'll circle back. Commissioner Lee?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover, are you able to respond?
Yeah, I'm present.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland? Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Council?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Parker? Commissioner Parker joined. Commissioner Fisher?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Fauchekio?
Present.
And Madam Chair, Bussie Reader.
Soon as I meet myself, present.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have 11 commissioners present. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's please proceed with the agenda as we have it stated. Executive Director?
Good afternoon. Is it minutes first or my report first? Apologize.
Yes, we should approve the
The minutes.
From the October 12th meeting as well as the October 14th emergency meeting. There is no roll call needed for that, Madam Chair, but if you could ask for approval.
Yep. Can I get a motion to accept the meetings as the minutes as provided? Second?
Second.
All right. There are no questions or concerns. The meetings have, the minutes have been accepted as provided. Thank you. Please proceed, Director Donald.
Okay, I will run through my report quickly since we're started a little bit late. Coming up now. Go to the next one, please. So we only have two items on the agenda for the board meeting today. And that's Resolution 22-38 that authorizes execution of a term sheet for the rescindication of the Henson Ridge rental properties. And then Resolution 2240 to approve allocation of FY23 local rent supplement programs, projects from the Department of Housing and Community Development. I am really pleased to inform the board that on October 28th, we were notified that we received through DC Housing Enterprises $55 million in new market tax credits. Those of you who were here last year will remember that we didn't get an award last year, and I believe this is the largest one in history, so we're very excited about that. Also, we're the only public housing entity of all the entities who received awards. And this is one even the highest among the awards this year. The, in addition to the important community projects, which I think is the most important thing, we also will earn income approximately $4 million over the next seven years. So there's a process to this. We go to the next slide, please. So the award is used to support a variety of programs or has options for supporting a variety of programs that are educational, they may have medical services, mixed-use housing, and retail projects. There is a pipeline of projects applied over the last two years. And the staff will be reviewing those to come back to DCHE to determine whether or not we would recommend approval of those projects or inviting new projects. So all of that is within the next 45 days. The DCHE board as well as the DCHA boards will have to approve first to accept the award and then to determine whether or not you want to support the projects that were existing in the pipeline or invite new proposals. We expect then we would be able to bring those recommendations to the board in the first quarter of 2023, which is we said calendar year because we're already in the first part of FY2023, so calendar year. Next, please.
So, Executive Director, question?
Yes.
New market credit. So first of all, congratulations on receiving the award, but I wanted to know if we could see atop the board can see a copy of the application, and I know in the application there's, we have to put in, I guess, some general ideas for the types of projects that we want to do, if not specific requests from other entities that would want to use the credit. So if we can get a copy of that, that would be great. And the other thing, I know that as part of this process for the new market tax credits, that we need to have a, an advisory committee that would advise the DCHE on projects that they're going to put forward and allocate the credits to. So is, do we have an advisory? I've never seen any reference to that.
Yes, I'm not sure, since this is the first award since I've been here. John Stringfield was appointed the DCHE president. We have to officially have a president and last year, since we had so few other DCHE projects, we consolidated the, that program to within OCP, but we had to designate a president, which we did and went through that process through the DCHE, just to point out. So John Stringfield is into, in a dual role. So can you, can you talk a little bit more about or respond to Commissioner Skinner's question about the advisory committee and then next steps, I think I've just outlined here, but if there's anything?
But I'd just like to see, I'd like to see our application.
Yes, yes. No, I've noted that. We will send the application to the board.
Okay.
Hey, Matt, can I get a quick question? I was gonna wait until the end, but since Mr. Skinner jumped in. Can you just maybe in a separate email or memo, bring us up to speed on what you've done specifically with DCHE? Because I know there's a lot of discussions at one point. I mean, it's, because of these new market tax credits, we were required to have it be a standalone entity with its own board. You reference its own board here many times. But now it sounds like it may be fundamentally folded back into DCHA under OCP. Is that okay based on the new market tax credits allocations? And then the other question is, who is on the DCHE board? Because I don't fundamentally know. I know there's a certain number of DCHA members who are supposed to be on the board. I know one of them is no longer on our board. One of those, can I finish? And I know one of those seats has been empty for a number of years. And so I get concerned about a entity that's now received $55 million in federal funds that may not be organized correctly and certainly has not had a full board in a number of years and hasn't reported out to DCHA in any meaningful way at any time in my recent memory. And so those things concern me. So it'd be great if you could just coalesce all that together and maybe you can just tell us right now who's on the DCHE board.
I do not have that right in front of me, so we'll give you an update, but the board is legally constituted because we've met at least once or twice since I've been here and even since we since we've folded in the operations into OCP. I'm seeing the note from John Stringfield that there is an advisory committee. We will provide that membership. And we'll also give you an update on any DCHE activities, which primarily are down to disposing of the three market property, the three scatter site properties.
Maybe Mr. Stringfield could tell us who's on the board right now.
Put it all together in a
I'd like to know. I'd like to know who's on the board as we stand right here at this very moment.
As Director Donald stated, Commissioner Slover, I can get you a comprehensive list of everything that you've asked for.
So you can't, you can't tell me who's on the DCHE board right now?
I will get you all the information that you requested by the end of this meeting.
So you're saying you can't tell me who's on the DCHE board right now?
I'm saying I'll get it to you by the end of this meeting. That's what I'm saying.
Okay. You are the head of DCHE, but you can't tell me who's
So I could, I can look it up and get it to you so that I'm not
Let's provide it before the meeting is over, please. Okay, moving on. Rachel, next slide, please. So here's our regular occupancy dashboard. No significant
Excuse me, Director Donald, my hand is raised because I have questions on the subject that we just discussed.
Didn't see that. Thank you.
One is, is there any public engagement with respect to how we spend this money?
Done.
First thing is, we have to accept, we have to accept the award. And over the next 45 days, what will happen is we'll talk to the CDF Fund to determine if we are actually awarded and what we need to do to award. So that's the next 45 days. And then after the next 45 days, what will happen? We'll bring the application, we'll bring the acceptance of the award to the board for approval of acceptance of the $55 million. And then, once we have the $55 million, we'll go through the process of reviewing the pipeline, taking a look at the investment criteria. Also, there will be a public proposal period where respondents can apply for award a percentage of that $55 million.
Our, our constituents who live in our housing or have vouchers come to our meetings to give us input. Is there any outreach to clients of the housing authority in connection with coming up with or approving the projects for this new market tax credits? That's my question.
Well, my answer to that is new markets tax credits has a very specific criteria to where they can be invested. And that's why we are, we'll have to review all respondents to this public request to determine if they meet the right criteria in order for us to award any of our tax credits to that specific project.
Will our residents have any opportunity for input into this process?
If residents are a part of an entity that meets the criteria that can be invested in, that will determine whether or not they have any input.
Commissioner Lee is asking
If they are not entrepreneurs, can they comment and say, I think this is a good use, I think this is a bad use?
No.
Thank you. The other question is, the last time we had new market tax credits, we had to run around at the last minute and find a project in Los Angeles that we could fund because if we didn't, we, we would lose the money. Is there a deadline for spending this $55 million or obligating it?
Well, the first step is we have to go through the process of accepting the $55 million. And then usually within 12 to 18 months, they, the process is to have those funds awarded. So the first thing is the next 45 days. That's the first step that we have to do to go through the allocation agreement with the CDIF, CDIF Commission to determine if we actually will receive the award. And then we have to come back to the board to request acceptance of the award.
So after that, we'll have 12 to 18 months to obligate the money?
Correct.
And will you advise us what that deadline is as soon as you know it?
I will, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Skinner, do you have another question on this? I see your hand raised.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I'm familiar with this process because I'm on the board of another entity that receives new market tax credits. So the advisory committee that I mentioned earlier has to review the applications that come to DCHE for use of the credits. And then the advisory committee would in turn make a recommendation to the board of DCHE on which projects should be funded. And so once we get the list of the, the members of the advisory committee, we can then determine the DCHE, DCHE board can determine who needs to be on that advisory committee and whether in fact there should be some, some residents from, from the public housing facilities.
Okay, are there any more questions? Let's move on. Occupancying, no significant updates from last month except for in two areas. One, we show you a cumulative total of how many applicants have been pulled from the waiting list, and that means contacted and invited to come in and to be matched with housing opportunities. And that's 5,600, almost 5,700 of the people who are in the public housing, the waitlist for public housing, which is about a little over a fourth of those. So we're making our way through the list. We do have plans to do a big surge of calls, excuse me. Sorry. It's my dog in the background. I'm sorry. She does this weird howling. Rachel, can you do this quick update? Let me go get her. Just the other item on the chain.
Rachel, are you going to be able to finish up the director's report? You're muted, Rachel.
I'm here. I'm back. I apologize. So the, the only other, so as I started to say, we're going to do a big surge of pulling from the waitlist to try to get through the entire waitlist within the next couple of months. And we are putting together a plan to do that. The other small uptick this month is that we had 33 actual move-ins, even though we do have others still in the pipeline. Give you an update on maintenance. It's no longer summer, so we're gonna, this becomes our maintenance update. You know, we did have a big surge this summer, even though it was really moving through a number of work orders. Last month's report, we've said that we had cleared over 10,000 work orders and now it's over 15,000. We originally have four blitz teams to address the properties with the more complicated work order, but now, and those were doing basically the more simple work orders. But now we have more complicated work orders. Either a lot of work orders in one particular unit or those that involve systems and other more technical work. So we're going to combine into a single team and then moving forward to address all of the outstanding work orders. The most common repairs are with emergency work orders and then plumbing, doors, windows, and blinds. A public safety report. I apologize for the the smallest of the, of the font, the board asked us to include a couple of public housing, I mean, I'm sorry, public safety updates in our monthly report, and we haven't quite refined the dashboard for that. But this is the same report that the chief provides to the operations committee and with the list of the major crimes and showing what has been down, what is up or down throughout the month, you see that all of the arrows are pointing down except for there was an uptick of one additional burglary. So we look at the current period and the previous period, which, which is a month. And these are crimes within one block of DCHA properties.
Just to correct you for a second, Director, that's
Yes, Chief, I'm sorry. Please, you can take this one.
Just to correct you. Yeah, this is year-to-date data. It's not for the month. So the crimes you see are for the entire year from the period of January 2nd through the last reported one was October 24th in 2022.
Okay, so year-to-date comparison. Great. Why don't you take the next slide, too?
Okay, I'm ready for the next one. And this is just a comparison for crimes occurring on or around our properties with the crimes occurring throughout the city. If you look at violent crime, you'll see that violent crime on it within a 75-foot radius by our properties is 1.69% of all the violent crimes occurring in the city. And the same thing with property crimes, 1.75% of the, over 2, over 18,000 property crimes occurring in the city. So all crimes on our property is 1.72% of the 21,986 crimes that occurred in the city. The second column just looks at within a one-block radius of our property because we know that still affects some of our residents. So you see the percentages increase to 11, about 11 and a half percent in violent crime, a little over 13% in property crime, and just about 13% of all crimes occurring in the city occur within a one-block radius of our properties that are, you know, of course, located throughout the city. So we always like to get that comparison. So we'll look at what's going on in the city and how it affects crimes around our properties.
Thanks, Chief. Just quickly, our resident engagement activities. This is, our classes and programs offered through the Office of Resident Services. We just started our apprenticeship program. We have STEM program that launched in October. Our new rent reporting and credit building program at Fort Dupont started terrace. And we have professional development for the apprenticeship training program is part of that curriculum. And then the youth ambassador program will launch the end of October. Oh, it did launch. I'm sorry. All of these happened. We're in November now. I think the chief shared this adorable photo of some Halloween-related activities, but those didn't get to see it. Our public safety office was out and about and engaging with our families and young residents. And then their members of the whole DCHA staff participated in our Halloween Day of Service and that was with our resident leaders on multiple properties. This is at Greenleaf, Syfax, and James Creek came together and we had a lot of fun activities with staff. You see our resident commissioners and staff as well as some of our partners on site. Looking ahead, Veterans Day is Friday, and we send out a message to our, I believe we have over 1,100 veterans who either live in public housing or receive vouchers as well as staff. We will be doing our gift of love holiday celebration the week of December 12th through the 16th. And we always invite the board to join us in distributing gifts for our families. And I think we've got some community resident engagement meetings scheduled for Kelly Miller-Ledroy, Hopkins, Kinnell Worth, Parkside, Park Morton, Sursum Quarter, Montana Terrace, and Langston Terrace over the next month and a half. And that's it, I believe. Thank you.
I see a few questions. Commissioner Council, Commissioner Skinner?
Yes, I'd like to know with the, with the holiday season coming up, are we prepared in boiler ops from December until April? We have a lot of backups. A lot of stoves are going to be put out. A lot of refrigerators are going to go bad because it's the holiday when people are cooking and a lot of backups. That's one. Number two, how bad was that fire at the Bigsby? Were there any of our clients at the Bigsby that got burnt out? And the follow-up on the Marigold? Thank you.
Is Ms. East on to do the update or respond to any questions about the boiler ops? And
Yes, good afternoon, Director and Commissioners. The, or I'll start with the Bigsby first. There were six units that were impacted. The families were placed in a hotel for two weeks by OTA. Currently, DCHA is taking responsibility of the remaining families. There are actually three remaining in hotels for repairs. Only one unit was completely burned that they're actually doing the repairs on. For the maintenance and for the winter, yes, we are prepared. The team is has been preparing for the winter months, including a holiday surge. So we have our parts in place to be able to address those. And then the last question that you had was in reference to, I'm sorry.
On the Marigold, we are preparing a memo that we will get to the board in the next few days.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Commissioner Slover?
On the Marigold, did we dig up the, the board resolutions that created the, the program with the Marigold?
We do, and we'll have all of that information in the memo.
Thank you.
Director Donald, just so that we're clear and we're putting it on record, you said the next few days, do you want to give the board a date, Commissioner Council, specifically?
I would say by the end of the week, but Friday is a holiday.
Friday is a holiday, so Monday?
I would prefer to say Monday. Staff, do we think we'll have that ready by Monday? I think we should, yes. So we, we plan to submit that by Monday.
That's perfect. Thank you. Just wanted, is that okay, Commissioner Council? All right. Thank you. And Commissioner Slover, I'm sorry. That's fine. I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Fine with me, yeah.
All right. Thank you. All right, thank you. Any other questions for the executive director before we move forward? Okay, hearing none. We do have, I would like to make an announcement before we go to public comment on the resolutions. We have a commissioner who has resigned from his role here on the DC Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. And we would like to recognize and honor our former commissioner, Commissioner Jose Ortiz-Gowd. I have a proclamation that I would like to read. To recognize and honor Ortiz, Jose Ortiz-Gowd for exemplary service to the District of Columbia Housing Authority. Whereas Jose is an entrepreneur, philanthropist and community activist. He has decades of experience in commercial construction to advance the cause of workforce development and empowerment in underserved communities. And whereas Jose was born in Puerto Rico, decided to create Run Hope Work in 2014, a nonprofit dedicated to helping residents between the ages of twenty to twenty-five get out of poverty and reduce post-traumatic stress. And whereas Jose is also passionate about helping to rebuild after Hurricane Maria caused massive devastation in Puerto Rico in 2017. He co-founded Puerto Rico One, a volunteer effort designed to contribute to the long-term development of the island. With families still living in US territory, Jose, excuse me, came back to the island days after the storm to provide medicine, supplies and equipment to those in need and still assist in efforts there. Whereas Jose's most recent endeavors include a large-scale electrostatic system technology company, Alist, L-E-S-T, created to help combat COVID-19 by disinfecting large spaces. And whereas Jose has been vocal about the needs of residents and passionate for economic and diversity inclusion, serving as a member of the committee on audit and finance and the committee of operations. And whereas to 2016, Jose has served on the DCHA Board of Commissioners with honor and distinction. Therefore, it is proclaimed that the DC Housing Authority Board of Commissioners through adoption of this proclamation to sincerely thank and recognize Jose Ortiz-Gowd for his dedicated dedication to the service of the District of Columbia Housing Authority to create a better quality of life for all residents of the District of Columbia. Adopted by the Board of Commissions and signed the ninth day, November 2022. Thank you again. Is Commissioner Gowd with us today?
No, he's not, Madam Chair.
Just wanted to acknowledge him and thank him tremendously for his years of service and commitment to the residents in DC as well as in Puerto Rico. Thank you. Any comments from my fellow commissioners before we move on? All right, hearing none. Again, thank you Commissioner Gowd for your years of service and commitment to our residents. We're going to continue to move forward with the public comment on the resolutions. Alithia, would you provide me some support?
Sure, we have.
I'm sorry, I thought we introduced the resolution first and then her comment and then the board would vote.
I thought we did that with your report, but please, I'm sorry, that was in brown bag, my mind, please.
We didn't even describe the resolution, if we could just.
Please go forward, I apologize.
Only one speaker for all both resolutions, so if I could have just introduce the resolution
Please.
so that we all know what they're talking about.
Yeah, please introduce the resolutions and then we'll move to public comment.
John Stringfield, are you introducing Henson Ridge or is Andre? And then I think Andrea Powell is introducing the LRSP, so in that order.
I can introduce the resolution for Henson Ridge. It is Resolution 2238 to authorize the execution of a term sheet for the re-syndication of the Henson Ridge properties. Henson Ridge is a, was a hope six project that was completed between 2002 and 2005. The reason we're requesting the board's authorization to approve the term sheet is to work with the current developers of the property. DCHA would work as partners to essentially refinance the project with tax credits in order to improve the current rental units as well as work with the overall team to provide some needed improvements. DCHA would be fifty-fifty partners as part of this re-syndication. There's also units, twenty-two units that are owned separately by DCHA called assessable. They're UFAST units that would be part of this transaction and would require additional board approval. And that pretty much.
Specifically, we're asking board approval today of the term sheet that we have submitted to the board. Thank you. Andrea?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here to introduce twenty-two forty, which is to authorize submission to the Council of the District of Columbia agreements to enter into long-term subsidy contracts for the LRSP program. So this resolution is for submission of about ten projects that would go to the city council based on a previous solicitation. And the selection by law, by the district law has the selection made by PACD and then they refer them to the housing authority where the housing authority and the voucher program determine that the projects meet the voucher program criteria, and then we also submit them to the council for approval. After they're submitted for approval, the projects go through the closing process and we enter into the the local hap, local AHAP, and then after closing, when the units come online two years later or so, we enter into the LTSE or the hap contracts. So that's the overview of that resolution.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Chair, we're ready for the public witness.
Thank you, Alithia.
Yes, the president who signed up to speak on both resolutions is Ms. Patricia Bishop. Ms. Bishop?
Yes, on the Henson Ridge project, would that be, since I heard the years, two thousand and two and three, that's a long time, which each one of these properties go through the same long term awaiting to have a better living?
No, Ms. Bishop, in fact, we had a meeting the other night with the Henson Ridge community and council member, Trayon White and and the current property owner, so as you know, right now, DCHA does not have any involvement. We don't have any ownership involvement in the project, nor do we manage it, it is managed by a third party. But we did hear a lot of reports about the property conditions and we met, had a follow-up meeting with Urban Atlantic to talk about changes in property management and improvements in maintenance even before the project is, goes through the the new rehabilitation. So our, we, and in terms of our twenty-two units, our property maintenance team is going out, I believe, this week or next week, and maybe Ms. East has an update, but to do inspections on each of those twenty-two units and make sure that everything is up to code. So yes, we will be doing all of the health and safety and basic maintenance before getting to the full rehab.
Okay, that's why my major concern was like, so many years, I know you're new, but so many years, people have lived in these horrible conditions. Before these resolutions come up, the tenant should be placed first. They should not be forced to continue to live in these inhable conditions. I know you're new, but I have been asking for the same old, same old not to be repeated over and over, not just for Greenleaf, but for every property that housing still has. Just like the stove situation, when the holidays are coming up. To replace a part on a stove then to give someone a brand-new stove, stop with your list of the stoves that had parts replaced. Get that on the ball. The furnace, the filter things, it's still, to me, something that housing can do add more better and quality to the tenants than to have to sit here and hear the resolution about something of a long term to a short term. And when you bring these slides up and just like Mr. Slover wanted a answer right then, he should have got that answer right then, not later, because that was already in the process. Them board members are already noted and dictated on paper. He should have came prepared for even to give that list of names. This is where the problem keeps starting at. People not accommodating the public or the commissioners when they ask a question and get a direct answer. Let's do better.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Madam Chair, that's it for testimony on the resolutions.
All of the resolutions? Both of them?
Yes.
This is William Jordan, I'm scheduled to testify on this resolution.
Alithia, do you have Mr. Jordan listed?
I have him listed as general comments, but Mr. Jordan, if you want to make comments on the resolution, please proceed. You have three minutes, I'm sorry.
My name is William Jordan, a member of the Park Morton Equity Team since 2018 under the leadership of Shante High, President of Park Morton's Resident Council. I've been engaging with Park Morton New Community since 2007. In this role, I've engaged with three executive directors and staff on issues pertaining to resident rights, fairness, treatment and equity. Based on this and related experiences, in the recent resident meeting hosted by Councilmember Trayon White, I urged the board to reject 2238 and the re-syndication. The proposed deal will reward Urban Atlantic for failure and the hardship that residents have gone through. Many of the promises, problems and false promises I heard at the Henson Ridge meeting reminds me of the many Park Morton meetings I've attended. It is so bad that the tenant, the situation is so bad that the tenant advocate actually recommended blowing up the LA Tech tax credits for this deal. I urge the board to make the following changes before even considering going forward. One, establish TOPA rights for the residents who live at this property or the equivalent, no excuses, to immediately fund a resident association for this property and to include reserves in the financing of this property specifically to address residents' needs going forward, it should be bundled in this project. Like Park Morton, this deal and the time and demand on DCH staff should be, have residents as partners, as equity partners in this, these kind of deals. So you need to fix this term sheet for resident equity. You need to build in support in this refinancing. Otherwise, this is just a windfall game for this developer and this will be repeated every fifteen years, fourteen years on these projects when they come back to churn and refinance a project and take more money out and do a deal. This needs to be rejected until it's dealt with. And finally, I wanted to comment on this DCHE thing. There's some funding left over from that LA deal that was supposed to go to public housing residents related to Resolution 2021. And as far as I know, that hasn't happened and that's been over a year. And I also wanted to note that the Marigold is a DCHE-related project that was funded years ago, and that should set off a red flag on what's going on with DCHE. And all you have to do is read the resolutions and it talks about how the Marigold came about as a DCHE deal. So I urge this, again, I urge the board to not go forward until you get some TOPA rights, some resident equity and some reserves built into this deal, because this is a game that's going to do every fourteen years. They're going to come back and they're going to do demolition by neglect and then they're going to refinance it. And the demolition by neglect is going to justify doing this kind of deal over and over and over again. And each time residents are going to be displaced, whether large scale or even short term. They shouldn't have to go through this and we shouldn't even be in this position. Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, just one correction. There's to be no displacement on this project, residents aren't going to move out, it's rehab in place. And so there's no, there are no plans or expectations as part of this redevelopment to to relocate anyone.
You've heard that before.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Appreciate your comment. Definitely well-taken. Alithia?
That's it for public comments on the resolutions, Madam Chair.
Okay, we can move forward, we can continue. I think that's it.
I have a question, Madam Chair, I have a question.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your question. I see two, question from Commissioner Council, that's what I was about to entertain, and then Commissioner Skinner.
Okay, my question is, Director Donald just said that it's not going to affect. Yet again, we know our buildings that we own are at least sixty years plus old. You said so cavalier, what is in place to make sure that there's no harm? The building's already old, so we, I'm quite sure that who's living there already have health conditions. How will we cure that not to make it worse?
I'll let OCP staff talk, but this is again not a public housing development. So Andre, can you talk about the age and condition of the property that's what Commissioner Council is asking?
Sure, just to clarify, these buildings, these units were completed in 2002 and between 2002 and 2005, so they're not that old. What we're trying to do is update the units, new kitchens and baths, painting, taking care of necessary repairs. That's one of the reasons why residents will be able to stay in place, why these renovations are taking place. There are also discussions of setting up hospitality suites so that residents can be out of their units while any type of work is going on.
To hear you say that, it's making me think about what we're doing, a wiring Potomac Gardens. We already know the road and problem they're having, the weather's changing, so those mice are going to come in. They already have holes, so we've adding more holes by putting the cable line through. What are we doing that, I'm quite sure, no, the East should know that. Are we probably blocking this, blocking these mice from coming in these holes that we're making and filling up the holes that are already there on that property?
Commissioner, that question is about Potomac Gardens and not about Henson Ridge?
I made it, it was two, both of them. If we go do any type of digging, how are we making sure that we're not going to make it? Are we going to combat that, that problem or are we going to make it worse? That's for both sites.
So currently for both sites, Henson Ridge and Potomac Gardens, there's no underground digging that is proposed as part of those projects, there'll be renovation in place.
But you're doing some pull-aparts, correct?
For Potomac, we're still putting together the scope of work for that, that rad conversion. And for Henson Ridge, there will not be any type of major. Renovation that would require us to go into the wall.
Thank you.
I think we should take Commissioner's, Council's point and really focus on the fact that we want to preempt this and not have these problems with the rodents. So there may be some work that we should do prior to, to ensure that these residents are not affected by any potential rodents or other issues that may disrupt their way of living. If that could be noted. Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
So Director Donald, it was mentioned, there was a meeting, I believe last week, that was convened by Councilmember White with residents at, at Henson Ridge. And I was able to only listen in on maybe five or ten minutes of that meeting. And I know residents were raising a number of issues and concerns about the property management and the condition of, of the properties. So how did the meeting end and there were, were there any agreements or commitments in terms of going forward?
Yes, that's why I convened the meeting the next day with, with Urban Atlantic to talk about all of those reports and the dissatisfaction with the property management company. As well as stepping up their onsite security, because there were also a lot of concerns about crime and public safety, which primarily is responsible of MPD. But they do have a small security presence there and I asked them to increase that. And to, they're already planning to move forward with a new management company. That they have used on another property that has seen considerable improvements. And so those were the immediate next steps and then, as I said, our team will go out to inspect the twenty-two accessible units or access fast units. To make sure that those are all up to, up to code and that we address any, any work orders or immediate repairs that, that need to be made. And we've also had, the staff has had a follow-up meeting with, with Councilmember White's office. And Councilmember is in support of this re-syndication of, of Henson Ridge and, and the plans for going forward.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner Skinner? Right, I see Commissioner Slover and the Commissioner Parker.
Can I ask a point of process question? In the past couple of months, we've been introducing the resolution, reading it, and then having Commissioner questions. Is that where we are right now? Because I, I just want to make, I want to ask questions about the resolution, but I don't want to do that turn.
Yes, sir. That's where we are at this point.
Right now, or the resolution's been read and so we're asking Commissioner questions? Okay.
Yes.
So my questions about Resolution twenty-two thirty-eight are, does DCHA have any specific rights at this stage in the deal? Do we have a first right of refusal? In other words, why is Urban Atlantic engaging with us at the level they are? Do we have a first right of refusal?
You are correct, Commissioner. We do have a first right of refusal.
And so that's really the reason they're engaging us at the level they're engaging us. Is that first right of refusal granted through the ground lease or how, how are we getting that first right of refusal?
I would have to get back to you on that, but there is documentation in place where we have a first right of refusal for each phase of Henson. There are two phases as well as accessible, accessible build. So there's three separate first right of refusal.
Okay, but the first right of refusal is, is exists, so in other words, they have to come to us to do a re-syndication before they can go to anybody else?
Correct, Commissioner.
In the, in the ground lease that exists, which is part of the exhibit, what are the terms of that ground lease? Let me get the right language here. It says the term is anticipated the existing ground lease remain in effect between the project owner. Which in theory will be us as well. So who is the, are we the current ground lease holder?
You are correct, Commissioner, yes.
And what are the terms of the ground lease?
I believe it's a ninety-nine-year ground lease.
So, okay, why would the terms change? We can get to that later. So given that we have the first right of refusal, do we have the right to find a new partner? Or do they just have the right to ask us if we say no, they can go find somebody else?
Like you said, Commissioner, we would have that right, but being that they are the current owners of the current development. It makes most sense to work with those development partners.
I, I get, I get that in a perfect world, that would make sense, but based on the Zoom meeting that I watched, thank you, Commissioner Hoffman, for, for making us aware of that. There is obviously a lot of concern about the condition of, the current condition of the property. So much so that the agency, I guess, met with the current owner after that meeting to discuss how to make that a better situation. And so the question I have for this board is, you know, have we done, have, have we done the due diligence to determine whether this is the best decision moving forward? For the residents of this, of this property, given what we've learned from Zoom meeting? And given what we've learned from the current conditions of the property. Have we explored every opportunity that we have to make that, to make the, the property better for the residents? I don't know, I don't think we have. And so that would be, you know, one of my concerns with, with moving forward. I know we approved the Rad Resolution, but that is not, that is not a term sheet. In other words, the term sheet is what puts this thing in motion. And so what I'm asking the board to consider at this moment in time is, are we doing the best by our residents? By proceeding with the current ownership group that has allowed this asset to get into the condition that it's in? Or should we be trying to find a different partner that maybe can be a better steward and shepherd for this asset? That's, that, those are my comments. I, 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 based on, based on what I see so far, I don't think we've done the work to determine whether this is the best path forward or not. So I can't support the resolution.
Commissioner Parker?
I want to echo Commissioner Slover's comments. I have concerns that the current management did not take good care of the residents or this property in the past. And that shows a history of neglect for both the financial asset of the property and also neglect of the, the resident rights. And I want to also echo what Ms. Patricia Bishop and Mr. William Jordan said in regards to resident rights. I believe that when we come forward with resolutions that involve a large sums of money for developers. We should have written in the resolution an understanding of what the resident rights will be. When that property changes hands to another entity, a private entity or a cooperative entity with us. If those rights are not in written format, they will not be abided by. And then when the property changes hands. It'll just be a verbal agreement that the new property owner can ignore. And so therefore, I feel that we do not have the proper safeguards. To assure the proper functioning of our relationship with this developer. To assure that they will properly do things financially. I believe our financial protocols are not in place. And to that end, I have sent to every commissioner by email just now. A resolution for us to improve our procurement and anti-fraud protocols. In order to protect the fiscal and financial integrity of our agency. And in all transactions that we do going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Parker. Commissioner Hoffman?
I listened to the entire tape of the meeting. And I understood when the meeting ended that Councilmember Trayon White. Said he would schedule another meeting since not all of the residents present had gotten to speak. I also would like to see something in writing from Commissioner, from Councilmember Trayon White. Saying that he's satisfied now and willing to proceed with this. That doesn't square with what I heard him saying at the meeting. Those, those are my concerns and questions.
Madam Chair? I would suggest, I asked my team if Urban Atlantic was here and they're not in the meeting. I'm not sure why we didn't invite them because they are the current owner. That we pull this down until we have them come and address some of the questions that the board has about maintenance. Past issues and going forward improvements that they're willing to make. And of course, we can ask the council member or get a letter from him or invite him to come as well. I would say, I do want to say that to Commissioner Parker's points, I mean, there's not a, a new owner, I guess the new owner, the new partner would be us. It is still the same owner and we will be joining that owner as a partner. So there's more accountability on the housing authority in this deal going forward. But I still think, given the questions and I was in that meeting and it was. Residents raised a lot of troubling issues in this, to the point that I scheduled a follow-up meeting with them. I came away feeling satisfied of, of the improvements and commitments. But I think the board should have that right and opportunity to meet with them and ask them those direct questions. So I'm going to ask us to pull this down and schedule it for next month.
Thank you, Director Donald. I think we were all on the same page with that one. Any other comments regarding, I'm sorry, Commissioner Parker, I see your hand is still raised. Commissioner Parker, do you have your hand still raised or is that from your last statement?
Yes, I just want to make sure that my proposed draft resolution. That I've sent to the Chair, Chair, Madam Chair and to all the board members would be placed in the public record. As a draft resolution for proposed changes to our procurement policy. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Madam Chair, my hand has been up, been up for quite some time.
I'm so sorry, Commissioner Blackson, please forgive me. Please proceed.
I have a question from the resident and I would definitely like for Mr. Ghul to be respectful when asking questions from the resident. To not to laugh or make a comment that they have the same knowledge that you do. One of the residents wanted to know that when the work is done at Henson Ridge. How can you state that won't consist of holes or tearing out the walls in those units? That's the question.
Sorry, Commissioner Blackson, I, I didn't understand the question. Could you read it again?
They're, they're basically asking, how can you ensure that holes and tearing out of the walls won't happen? When you're doing the remodeling at Henson Ridge?
Currently, as part of the proposed scope of work, it, it, it doesn't require. Contractors to go into the walls or to, to make holes. They can make repairs if there's an existing hole, but that's currently not part of the proposed scope of work.
Okay, she said that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blackson. My apologies if I missed anyone. Are there any other commissioners with questions? We just, we're going to pull this one back. Any other questions that you would like to, the director to know as it relates to this resolution?
My hand was just up, just motioned to table, based upon the director's or, uh, uh, executive director's recommendation.
Thank you. Can I get a second motion?
Second.
Uh, can we vote on this, please?
Okay, just again, we'll be voting yes to table or no for it to remain. So I'll start with Commissioner Harris.
Yes to table.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
Yes to table.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Yes to table.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Council?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Parker?
Yes to table.
Thank you. Commissioner Fauchekio?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Basi Reader?
Yes to table.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have twelve. Yes, the board has voted to table this resolution.
Thank you.
So we're now going to this, that, that was the first resolution, correct? So we're moving forward to the second resolution. Commissioner Slover?
Uh, yeah, Resolution twenty-two forty. I have some of the same questions and concerns I've had before. You know, during this, years that this has come forward to us, we have established that DCHA. Has no direct involvement in the selection process for the projects being considered for subsidy. So DCHA does not get involved in picking which projects get the subsidies. And it's been suggested from the agency that therefore DCHA doesn't play a critical role in this process. But I argue that we do because we set the rent or we finalize, we approve the final rent. Which is obviously one of the most critical elements of the project is what the rent subsidy is going to be. And so that's where I get concerned because as I understand it, from the notes I received from the agency as a follow-up. DC, DHCD submits with the, with the, the number of units, the rent that they are suggesting. So we get that from them. And the way our process works, we all know has problems. We are supposed to then confirm or affirm that rent is what we call a market rate rent, which is where I think we have problems. And so based on our current underwriting. We have no market-driven rent reasonable process to ensure that a market rate rent is being paid for these projects. That was affirmed again from the agency's response, which, which basically said. That if the rent submitted by DHCD falls below. The rent standard we have on our website and it's, it is approved, that's our process. And so part of what we were cited for in the HUD report was that we do not have a rent reasonable process. And it's, and it is determined that if over a rent, that HUD will be asking us for a refund on those dollars. And so we have not corrected that problem yet, although we have identified that that problem exists. And so we are deferring that fix for eight years, I understand it. So even though these are local funds that we're discussing, I believe these are LSRP funds we're using. The same thing would apply in my opinion. We need to be good stewards to the city's dollars, just the way they are to the federal dollars. So I find it hard for me to accept our role in this process and we cannot say. With any surety, because we don't have a process in place to determine. That the rents that are being submitted to us by DHCD. And I assume that those are the rents a developer gave. and I assume that those are the rents a developer gave them, I'm just making that assumption, are market rate by any market rate standard. So therefore, I can't support the resolution because I don't feel like we're fulfilling our obligation under, under the terms and conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Slover. Any other commissioners? Comments? I don't want to miss you all.
Yes, this is Commissioner Skinner.
Please.
So I'm, I'm looking at the information, Commissioner Slover, we received earlier today from the staff in, in terms of the process they used. But it says that HCVP conducts market analysis based on the properties addressed in the submarket and the submarket receiving the LRSB. And then they determine that that rent doesn't exceed the published standard. So, so they, they're saying that they do at least some kind of market analysis to determine that, that the rents are within reason.
I, I, I think I addressed that when I, when I said that we have all agreed fundamentally that our payment standard is not based on a market rate. And that's the problem with our payment standards. So what I'm saying is, you've actually affirmed my concern, which is that as long as whatever payment comes in is underneath the published payment standard, that it's accepted. That is, in essence, the problem with our process. We don't have any rent reasonableness process. We have a process that says this rent that was created by what I don't know, not a rent reasonableness process. As long as it's below that number, it's approved. That's not a process.
So, so you're suggesting that we not accept these funds from?
Well, they're not our, what, what I'm saying is, we have affirmed as part of our, so what we are being tasked and asked to do is to affirm the rent is a reasonable rent. But we don't have a process to do that with the federal funds. We certainly don't have a process to do it with these funds. So if the city is willing to say, you're okay, the rents, the rent, we're not going to come back on you like the Fed might, like HUD might and say, the rent, you're paid, you paid $400 more than the market, therefore, we want that $400 back. I don't want to continue to put the agency into that sort of exposure because we still don't have a process that prevents that from happening. As, as was described in the email you just referenced.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, I was, I'm beating myself. Yes, please, because I, I am also getting a different perspective. From what, please go ahead.
If I can respond, so the agency over the years has been determining rent payment standards using submarket rent and using, I mean, allowable rents using the submarket index that is on our website and has been using the rent payment standard of 187% of fair market rent that the board just reaffirmed in September. We did a market study and to determine what those rents, the average rents should be in those submarkets. Yes, HUD has asked us to go back and look at that again and to go back several years since that had, that had been done until this year. But every day, we are approving half contracts, we're using those standards. And so it's not as if we have no standards to determine the market rents by the the submarket neighborhoods. And that's what, so I don't, it's not perfect and we just now updated it. And we have to make decisions or recommendations to the board. The board will have to decide about whether or not to increase or decrease rents according to the market analysis. But I don't know if Commissioner Slover is suggesting that we don't do any half contracts until that process, which has not been addressed in years. At least now, we've made some strides with a new market analysis, an impact study, and affirming the rent payment standard that we do have some guidelines to move forward. And this is local money. And the city is satisfied with the process used to determine the rents for those particular projects. And on that basis, I would request that the board move forward so that these projects can move forward in the pipeline for affordable housing for residents throughout the city.
Let me address that because I, I, I think we're dancing around the issue that we don't have, we, yes, this board once again affirmed 187% of fair market rent. But we also have a study that says that's not the right number. And yet, we've chosen to wait for a year to implement that study. So we have these rents that a third party has determined to be the proper rents. And yet, our website continues to have rents do not correlate to that number. And so that's my concern. And what I said a solution could be because there are local rent supplement program dollars, is if the city is willing to say, we're not going to come back on you at some point because these rents are not right, then that's great. I'm perfectly willing to do that. But what I don't want to do is to continue to make the same mistakes we've made after they've been pointed out. And what's been pointed out to us is that we do not have a rent reasonableness process. That is in the HUD report. That has not been disputed by anybody. What we have is a rent payment standard not based on a rent process. That is what we have. So the rents that we are accepting and approving are not based on a rent reasonableness process. So therefore, we cannot determine whether the proper rents are not. That's the point I'm trying to make.
Commissioner Skinner?
So I, I want to agree with Director Donald. We've been, we're, we're approving rents every day. We have an opportunity here to provide 371 units of very low income at 30% or less. And I don't think we should forego that just because you, you feel, Mr. Slover, Commissioner Slover, that we don't have a, a proper process in place. I mean, again, we're, we're, we stop everything to wait to get this process completely done. So we need to move forward and take advantage of these funds that the city is providing us again, providing 371 units of very low-income housing. So, so therefore, I support the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Council?
All of us are entitled to our opinions. But what gets me is that we want to grab every time somebody says that they're going to give us a dollar instead of making sure how the rules should be used in using and taking the dollar. Now, we're talking about getting money to actually house somebody with a voucher. And we have vouchers right now that our residents are literally asking for extensions because the voucher doesn't work. And I'm hoping she doesn't get offended. We have a commissioner that holds a voucher and she can't find something now. So if we have the problem sitting on our board, you know it's larger out there in the street. So either we're going to learn how to make things go right, do right, and use best business practices. It's not about grabbing a dollar. Sometimes you got to be careful the dollar you're grabbing, what you got to do to get it. Thank you. Thank you.
I think the point Commissioner Council is trying to make is that our, that our rent process pays really high rents in some markets and really low rents in other markets. And we need to fix it sooner rather than later. I don't know why we're waiting a year to fix it. And we're continuing to, to, to go down a road that we know is broken. And so as a board member, I try to take every opportunity I can to find ways to fix things. And if it's something like this, pointing something out in the middle of the process, it might get in the way of something like this, then that's the leverage that I have. So at some point, this board has got to step up and make these changes. When that is, I do not know. But I mean, we've been talking about this for a year. Ever since Director Donald came in, she can tell you, the first thing I told her was, it's my reasonableness process is a problem. Looks like we're not going to get it solved for another year. I don't understand that.
Commissioner, we can't get it solved for another year because it's not in the budget to increase the rents because the market studies showed that we were paying way below market rent in most of the subneighborhoods.
If you want to get into this right now, we can because every, those are things that are already done. It's not a budget, it won't affect the budget if moving forward, we pay the rents, the proper rents. I'm not going, I'm not saying go backwards, I'm saying go forwards. You've said it yourself, we're grandfathering everybody in, below or above, whatever it is. Every new half contract, every new voucher should be following what we've learned from that process. That doesn't require any additional budget.
Yes, it does.
Well, we can argue that because.
It totally does. Because most of the, most of the rents that were, most of the, the, the submarkets were determined that we are currently paying below what would be the current market rent. So in order, if we go forward tomorrow, we would be paying more every new half contract we get, we issue with, not everyone, I'm sorry, but about 75% of the rent or lower. So I think we gave you the budget projections on, on what that would be to implement. That's, that are not, that's not included in our FY '23 budgets, local or federal. We're asking for additional funds from the city, but we don't have them yet.
$600 million organization, we can find, mine's the most important thing we do. And I, I would argue that the applications on the budget are not as you're describing. And it's really critically important that we get it fixed because we have significant number of our residents who cannot find housing because we place 68% of FMR in certain markets and we pay 180% in others.
Happy to come back with the budget projections and the board can decide if it wants to reallocate funds in the FY '23 budget to, to, to do that. But right now, we have something in front of you that actually will not go into place for several years because these projects are just being built. So we're asking that the board would approve the resolutions based on the market, based on the rents that negotiated for each of these projects that are listed in the resolution per project to, so that the pipeline of these affordable units can get started.
And is the city willing to waive any responsibility that we've given them a bad information on the rent?
The city believes we've given them bad information since we've been doing it this way for the last several years when this agency has not even reconsidered the fair market rents. But I don't know if anyone is here from the city who could make that statement. DHCD has issued us an MOU and has signed off on this particular resolution and, not sign up on the resolution, but on the basis of for the resolution, so.
Do I see any additional hands or are they up from the last comment? Commissioner Council, is your hand up from the last comment or you have another question?
I, I just want us to be clear, and I know I sound like a broken record of saying the best business practices. We have things that are in front of us that are very critical. And it's good to have a forecast, not just stick with a five-year plan, but a 20-year, even a 40 or 99-year. But what we have in front of us right now, and I've said it and nobody's said anything, we have a problem with the vouchers right now, not later, but right now. I'm getting phone calls in Texas due tonight and on weekends because the residents don't know where to take or drop off their extensions. They are afraid that they're going to get put out because their rent's going to start coming in because of the voucher. We need to secure, this is an emergency. We need to secure, how are we going to make sure that they're going to have a roof over their head? Not just because of the holiday, but because that's the kind of business we're supposed to be in. And we're not addressing it. We're talking about forecasts, what to bring money in? And we're not going to use it right now? We need money now. We need to find out why these vouchers are not working now. Why does it change? Why did we're offset by $300, $400? Or maybe sometimes $1,200? What's the problem? What is it that we're not doing? As you can see, that's another one coming through. What are we doing? Or what are we not doing? Thank you.
Are you seeking an answer at the moment or you were making a statement? I just don't want to be rude.
Both, both. Thank you.
I'm going to come back to that because I, I think the, the, the solution that the staff has given us is this resolution. Then if we, if we refuse to move in that direction, but this is what they've given us. But I'll yield to the director, she has a further question, one of her staff persons, before I go to Commissioner Skinner, just want to make sure we're addressing the question from Commissioner Council.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not understanding the question.
Basically, he's asking, he's, he said, is there anything else we're doing to address the, the, the question that's on the table now regarding the rent? Is there anything else other than your resolution that you're proposing that you're doing? And you could say no, Brenda, it's okay.
I don't understand, I don't understand the question. I don't.
That's fine.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Commissioner Council, do you want to further or do you want to? You made your statement. She doesn't understand your question. I just want to make sure I'm giving all of you guys an opportunity to get your questions answered.
Okay, this resolution is asking us to vote on something for somewhat down the line. Okay? I'm talking about what we're doing now to address the issue that's in front of us, that our residents, that are voucher holders, that accept vouchers, trying to relocate to find somewhere to live because we're either rehabbing, demoing, or we're doing a mixture. I'm talking about the ones that are in front of us now. Not talking about later, what's in front of us now. These vouchers cannot be used that we have out in the street now. What are we doing?
And you're saying they can't be used because it's not enough money?
Correct.
That's what, I'm just trying to get us to the point. So you're saying, is there something that the agency is doing at this very moment to rectify the problem that many of our current voucher holders are having, identifying properties to live in according to the amount on the voucher?
Bingo.
Okay, that was the question. I just, I wanted to make sure I got it. So did you understand this time, Brenda? I'm sorry, Director Donald.
I guess, and then the response will be, we'll come back to the board with the cost of, of updating all of the, or the rents that were indicated by the, the market analysis. And the board can make a budget decision and direct us how you want to move forward.
Well, that suffice, suffice Commissioner Council. Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
As I said before, I think we have an opportunity to here to provide 371 units of low-income housing directed at residents 30% and below. And therefore, I'd like to move this resolution. So, so I move for the approval of Resolution 2240.
Second.
Lethia, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Fauchekio?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson? Commissioner Blackson? I'll circle back for a response from Commissioner Blackson. Commissioner Council?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Parker?
No, certainly not without having adequate.
No, certainly not without having adequate financial controls.
Thank you, Commissioner Parker. Commissioner Slover?
No, for the same reason as Commissioner Parker.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman?
No.
Thank you. Madam Chair Bussie Reader?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'll circle back to Commissioner Blackson. Are you able to give a response, Commissioner Blackson?
You repeated, Alithia, I'm sorry.
Yes, this is the approval for Resolution twenty-two forty, yes or no?
No.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, you have seven yes, five no, the resolution is approved.
Thank you. We're going to move forward and open this up for our public comments.
Okay, as a reminder, we're going to do our residents first. You all have five minutes, and then we'll go into our non-residents, who have three minutes. The first person I have on the list for residents is Ms. Deondra Johnson. Ms. Johnson, I see that you are on. Are you able?
Yes, hello.
Yes, please proceed, you have five minutes.
Yes, hello, how you guys doing today? I was still concerned about not finding nowhere to live as of yet. I've been searching, and I cannot find anything for the housing voucher approved, the amount rent. Even in southeast, I cannot find anything, and pretty scared that me and my children will be on the street. I was still wanting to know, is you guys going to change the amount for the rents? So I may possibly find something, because the landlords have this rent amount very high, where we cannot afford the rent. I was also wanting to talk about a resolution for what I'm talking about as of right now. Yes, hello?
Hi, ma'am, I wasn't sure if you were finished yet. This is Brenda Donald, Executive Director. This is what we were just talking about with the board, and so I promised the board that I would come back to them with the cost estimates for increasing the rents for each submarket based on the study we did this summer, so we'll be able to come back to them very shortly, before the next board meeting.
Okay.
It takes some time, yeah, yes, ma'am, just to be clear, I mean, it probably still will take some time to update everything, assuming that the board can identify funds, but we will give them the cost estimates and let them make the decision.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Donaldson.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next is Amanda Harris. Amanda Harris? I'm sorry, the name is actually Amanda Davis, Amanda Davis.
Yes, good afternoon, how are you?
Good afternoon.
My name is Amanda Davis, I am currently an HCV participant. I requested to speak to the Board of Commissioners today, because I have experienced gross negligence and mishandling of my case with the employees at Housing. The most pressing issue is that my landlord has not received compensation for my unit since July of twenty-twenty-two. Right now, he is owed fourteen thousand and sixty-eight dollars. We have sent over thirty emails and placed numerous calls and have not received a competent response. My landlord was provided with conflicting information from different employees in Housing. He has provide, he was provided with spreadsheets that contain incorrect information and did not, information that did not pertain to my residence or the landlord account that's on Housing. He was pointed in multiple directions, or leading him to still not receiving compensation for the unit. It was not until I submitted a request to testify today that we received correspondence from the ombudsman. In one business day, he was able to find resolution for what we have been reaching out to Housing for, for four months. My next issue is the gross incompetence and mismanagement of HCV participants cases. Since February of twenty-twenty-one, I have been requesting a briefing to relocate due to an increase in my family size. It took Housing two and a half months to, to respond to my initial request. I was provided with misinformation on why I could not be scheduled for a briefing. Due to work, school, and familial obligations, I ceased looking for a new unit, because I did not receive any communication regarding how to move forward. This year, I began searching again. In April, I attended a briefing and received correspondence after I attended the briefing, that they would not be able to move forward and provide me with a transfer voucher, because I had not submitted a recertification since twenty-twenty. This was not true, as I had completed one four months prior, and received email from D.C. Housing Authority Customer Service stating they received my email indicating I dropped it off, and that I needed to know if it was received. Furthermore, if I was a year out of compliance, why would they continue to pay for my unit? I was provided with the information of a specialist that was responsible for my case. She, again, also gave me conflicting information that prior to what I had received, stating that she would not release a voucher, because I had a recertification that was due in the next coming months. I questioned this process, but complied and submitted the paperwork. This was in April. The specialist never confirmed receipt of the completed research, nor did I receive correspondence regarding my expected contribution. I waited a month and a half to hear from the specialist and began to escalate my concerns. I received an email from another Housing employee telling me there was no hold on my transfer voucher, and was provided with a voucher number through email. I never received a paper voucher. That created an issue when I applied for a unit and put all the information into the system, because there was no paper voucher. I have, again, ceased to search for a new unit, because my landlord has not received proper compensation for his unit. Because the, the details of this back and forth is so intricate, I would like to be able to provide the board with all of the email correspondence and all of the inconsistencies, the disrespect that I have received. If there's an email that I can send it to, so that it can be discussed outside of this public meeting, that would be greatly appreciated. I think that it needs to be seen how D.C. residents are being handled, and not just because I work, doesn't make anything different, but I work. So for me to be disregarded and dismissed is very disrespectful. I would also like to speak on the inability of finding housing with approved rents that Housing is offering. I'm either finding that the housings that accept these, these rents are either in a neighborhood that is unsafe, or they are not remodeled, and I wouldn't be comfortable paying my portion to a unit that is that severely, I guess, mismanaged. My hope is that the board will begin to investigate the numerous issues within this agency and make the necessary changes for the residents to receive competent, courteous customer service. And again, I would like to know who I would be able to provide the information that I had to submit to the ombudsman, so that the board can see what's going on, because what happened between myself and my landlord is extremely unprofessional, is extreme incompetence, and there's a strong dismissive behavior and attitude towards housing, residents, and HCV participants that are currently working with housing specialists right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Davis, we will give you, Ms. McNair will be the point of contact to send your information to the board, and we will follow up, or she'll put her information in the chat. And I would also like to receive your correspondence. I, I look to see, and I haven't seen anything from you. I'm, I'm glad that the ombudsman was able to help, but I'd be very interested in, in seeing all of the correspondence as well.
Thank you.
Director Don, could you, I know you introduced the New Housing Choice Voucher Woman last month. Could you give everybody her name again, just so everybody knows who running that agency now?
Yes, and she's on medical leave right now.
So who, who would their point of contact be at, at Housing Choice Voucher right now?
Right, so that would be Carissa Span is the person who is, or Anissa Davis, the two deputies.
Okay, I, I put my email into the chat, if you want to send that to me directly, I would appreciate it. If I can send it to the rest of the board as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Next is Del Brown.
Before we proceed, Alithia, excuse me, Commissioner Slover, did you have a question? Your hand was still raised, or that was from the last time?
That was mine, thank you.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we didn't overlook it. All right, I'm sorry, Alithia, please proceed.
Okay, is Del Brown? Okay, I'll move on. Elaine Mooney? Elaine Mooney? I'll continue. Edward Harris? Edward Harris? Okay. Rosa Burbridge, I do see Ms. Burbridge. Ms. Burbridge, you have five minutes, thank you.
Hello, everyone, and good day. First, I would like to say, I don't know if, excuse me. Sorry, my puppy was trying to get in. Is DCHA still in housing, or have you guys become realtors now? The money that you spend with the contractors and the developers, I hear resolution after resolution about property, but I'm hoping one day you'll surprise me and talk about what's going on with the residents. You know that you have failed, there's not a doubt in your mind. HUD has told you, you have failed. The residents have told you, you have failed. And instead of doing something to change that, it seems like you get angry, because you have your own agenda. Red is not a good prospect. Red takes away the safety net. It was almost laughable when you said with the first resolution, you have the audacity to want to take over property that is neglected, deplorable, and atrocious, which is really describes most of DCHA property. But you're going to come in and play Captain Save, and you can't do it with your own properties. I'm not sending this out and blaming any individual. But until you listen to the residents, we are your solution. We are the ones who are going through this. You know, you get on here, half of you won't look at the camera, the other half is asleep, and it just makes me feel like I'm bothering you, because you can't keep your eyes open. You know, it, it, it's, it's a bad feeling, and I'm, I'm supposed to be your first priority, because I'm a resident. Where can you get the money from the vouchers? I don't know. Stop giving the developers everything. I mean, time after time after time, I am so disappointed in DCHA. I'm not blaming anyone. Let's admit we have a problem. The residents are the solution. If you stop trying to bill and bill, complete one project, two projects. You just got this money, and you're just giving it away, and there's allegations, solicitation. It's just a hot mess. Yeah, I do want to think, thank you for coming on, for giving us an opportunity to speak. Matthews twenty-seven and four says, Judas said, "I have sinned, because I spilt innocent blood." Even Judas had a conscience, after he betrayed Christ. Where's yours? Get, I, I'm, I'm, I'm actually begging you, think about the residents. Can we be on your agenda? Can you do a resolution that will help the residents? Why is everything developer, developer, appraising? And please, I beg, train some of your staff. You're talking about the management, I'm talking about the members on here today, how to be personal. Give them a little sensitivity training, and sometimes, even if you don't like what a person is saying, just pretend you're listening. It goes a long way. I appreciate you, I'm speaking as a resident, I know you can do better. I have seen you do better, it's in you to do better. But until you listen with empathy and get rid of that personal agenda, I'm gonna tell you a secret, don't tell nobody, your loyalty's supposed to be to the residents. Now, everyone, have a great day.
Thank you, Ms. Burbridge. And next is Paulette Matthews, Ms. Matthews? Ms. Matthews, are you able to unmute? Press star six.
Hello, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Hello?
We can hear you, you have five minutes, Ms. Matthews, please proceed. I think you're muted again. Press star six to unmute, if you're on your phone.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we hear you.
Hello, everybody, again. This is Ms. Matthews, and I appreciate the little tidbit with the public safety. I have been asking for it for some time now, but what I'm, what I was asking for is not what you really gave me. It's good to know everything that's going on within the neighborhood and all the other little details that were said that I didn't quite understand, but since I moved where I am in two thousand and nineteen, I always hear gunshots going off. When I first got here, I thought someone was actually in my living room, and I used to say way back then, I didn't know I was moving to Vietnam from Berry Farms. So I still feel that way, and I heard what Ms. Donald said, and whoever the other person is that chimed in with her, but that didn't give me no sense of security, nor did it make me feel comfortable than what I am. I can't speak for everybody, but I think that the people in the neighborhood would like to know. I know when, sometimes when the gun rounds go off, they could be four or five blocks away, I guess, but they, they're sounding like they're nearby. So when I'm asking for like a safety report, I'm talking about in certain areas like the Bigsby or whatever, I want names of your properties being said. I heard him say something about a robbery or something, like, I guess it's been one robbery since the time that he quoted. I don't know, but it's not detailed enough for me. So I appreciate it, but then again, it's like, what did you, what just happened just now? Because it really wasn't nothing for me, I feel, but that's just my personal opinion. I also, I'm kind of puzzled, because I walked down MLK, and I see all these buildings standing up, and I don't know where they actually get their funding from, but I know every time I went to talk about Berry Farms, and we were coming to all the board meetings, coming down to DCHA, talking with Paula, I'd have been to Chicago and everywhere else, and then we did this brown groundbreaking thing. And it wasn't even a foundation, I don't, it wasn't even Paul, but then I walked down MLK, and I see all of these places that used to be storefronts, now I think they get ready to turn them into apartments or condos. And so I'm just confused a little, and maybe somebody can help me. No one seems to know what's going to go on with Berry Farms, and how frequently we'll be able to get back, but yet I always hear people say, well, we want them to get back as quick, as quick as possible. But that doesn't look like what's happening, because these places soon will have residents actually living in them, and we've been struggling with this for so long, and the neglect was on the Housing Authority. And then, when you get to the third party, that gives y'all a scapegoat, like she keeps saying. Well, it's Mid-Atlantic, but you still have your hands in it, so you're responsible. I feel as though y'all should have fixed the neglect before y'all could even pass it on to someone else. And then when y'all were talking about the Bigsby, I'm aware of what happened there, because I have a friend that lives there. You really didn't go into detail, because even though there was a fire, I was also told that because the fire department, now that might be on the fire department, didn't know how didn't know how to turn off the sprinkling system there, and so a lot of people's units that wasn't in that physical building, but the one that was next to it, a lot of them are in hotels because of water damage. So, um, I'm like, what is really going on here? Because everybody knows this is not just starting here recently. This has been a history. And then it's said that even the board members cannot get their concerns answered, and us living in it, we can't. It's always put off to the next month, the next meeting, which you never talk about it, or we don't have enough time because what's going on in our lives is more than five minutes. And there should be a meeting where as though it's basically about residents and what's going on, even though it doesn't seem like y'all are listening. But you know, y'all's agenda is y'all's agenda, but actually, we are the ones that y'all are supposed to be serving. And a lot of times, people would get real rude when you try to ask them something or say something to them, but it's their job to do what they need to do, and it's not getting done. Then you want to put, like, you need to have something and by the certain length of time, but housing never does nothing in the time in which they needs to. Then y'all spoke of the, the stoves and refrigerators. That's something that should be a norm opposed to a holiday. I mean, it takes a long time for anything to get done. Floors that need to be fixed are still, people still here waiting for floors to be fixed. I've had a lot of issues, and they're working on my issues, but they're still, like, I put in a, a work order two weeks ago. I don't know what's going on. Maybe there's been some type of emergency on the property. I'm clueless, but it shouldn't take that long for people to get their stuff done. You know, and if we don't get our stuff done, oh, well, it's a thirty day notice, so da, 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 and that's not fair at all. So, I don't know. I would like to update on Berry Farms while I'm speaking, which probably won't get no answer. I'm trying to figure out about permits. Um, because I keep hearing people talk about, we want them to get home, we want them to get back, or whatever the case may be. And there's no really timeframe nor more than for the senior building and the, the feud that's gonna come besides it, I guess. I don't know. Because when we left, my thought process was always asking y'all, did y'all have the money? Y'all kept saying yes, that it would be like sum the road. This, uh, Eaton Road, then Stevens, but that's not how it's playing out. So can anybody give any clarification of when at least the whole project will be completed? Or sum the road, or when the townhomes will come, or you still don't know nothing? And I would like somebody to answer some questions, or did I go back on mute?
We heard you, Ms. Matthews.
We heard you, uh, Ms. Matthews. We're clear. Do we have?
Yeah. The only update. Y'all understand, hello, I don't want to be cut off, muted, or bored from the meeting.
We were trying to answer, Ms. Matthews.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, we were trying to answer you, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
On Berry Farm, the only timeline we have, ma'am, is on the senior building. I know that the staff has been doing community meetings, um, with the residents to update you on the other phases of the project. But right now, the groundbreaking was just on the senior building, and that's eighteen to twenty-two months, um, on completion. But I know that they've had resident meetings and will have regular resident meetings to update you as other phases, um, come online.
Um, Brenda, is it possible for us at possibly next month meeting, because I've heard Ms. Matthews say this, can we get Poa on the line to give us?
Excuse me, Ms. Rita, I hate to be rude. Ms. Rita, Ms. Rita, hold on, please, for a minute. Ms. Donald, they had one meeting, okay? And y'all should have been there, okay? I was there. I'm gonna always try to be there, not unless health is a problem. And a lot of questions and concerns of the residents who were there were questions that was needed to have been answered by you guys. So the next meeting for Poa to have with the residents, I'm not certain if it's gonna be at the Recreation Center in Berry Farms or not. But I can let you know that it's gonna be in February supposedly, because they said that due to the holidays, we know how people get close to the holidays or before, and they start very early. Um, you know, they want to just wait. So in February, there will be a meeting. The thing of the matter will be whether or not D C H A will be wherever they may be and be able to answer all questions and not say, oh, well, we gotta get back with you, or da, 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 or da, 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 because now it's time. Because y'all should have a lot of questions to be answered from all the other little notes that y'all took and haven't answered yet. Even the ones that are being asked of y'all on these calls and not coming there with the shenanigans, talking about, oh, well, uh, 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 and, and please, and thank you.
Ms. Matthews, I was going to respond. I don't know if you want me to at this moment or not.
Go ahead. I just wanted to put that little tidbit in for my time be up.
Understood. So what I was gonna suggest to the director is that we actually have a, if it could be a separate meeting or at the board meeting, if we have a report out from our partners with Poa to give us an update on the timeline. That's the best that we could do at this moment. That's what I was gonna ask, and would that suffice for you, Ms. Matthews?
Yeah, you can, but I can call them too. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just want to get your, get your questions answered. Thank you. Thank you, Director.
Okay, the next on our list is Ronald Smith. Ronald Smith. Uh, okay, I'll move on. Shante Ha, Ms. Ha.
Thank you. Um. Proverbs, chapter six, verses sixteen through nineteen. There are six things that the Lord hates, seven that are an abomination to him. Haughty eyes, a lying tongue, and hands that shed innocent blood, a heart that this, the devises wicked plans. Feet, uh, feet that make haste to run to evil, and a false witness who breathes out lies. And one who sows discord among brothers. D C H A has committed these abominations against the Lord's words on a multitude of occasions from lying about helping with creating the Resident Management Corporation. Um, not moving the, uh, the residents until the bill first housing option was available, not assisting well enough with keeping all of the Park Morton residents in Ward One, not working fluently and cohesively with the Council at Park Morton to plan the Section Three Resident Business Opportunities, Employment, Internships, and Apprenticeships. Develop the, uh, the Resil- twenty-two nineteen Resolution Promise for the summer. Create and notify the Park One Equity Plan Self-Sufficiency Opportunities. Establish meetings with the pro, uh, the program for Phase One of Park Morton, allowing all residents to remain um, in their tenure while their properties are redeveloped, including me, and not giving a guarantee in writing to home ownership, uh, to Park Morton residents in Phase Two of the redevelopment. In light of these actions, we've experienced a lack of care for our properties and our residents that led to an allowing of residents to perish, creating shady deals while stealing equity and the top of rights from Park Morton residents, as well as other residents of other properties, coercing the residents to bear false witness against me as a president, to make an attempt to remove me from our presidency, to the point that I had to send out a press release to stop Director Donald from doing this. D C H A has squandered roughly one point nine million dollars in funding by implementing interim, interim controls in two thousand nineteen, only to vacate more than a hundred and thirty-three families in two thousand twenty during the height of the coronavirus pandemic. And D C H A has created chaos amongst my community, my personal life, as well as in, as well as internally within its own institution. And on top of, the, on top of everything else, D C H A was sued for a second time by the Office of the Attorney General for discrimination. I, as a president and resident, have experienced this personally, and the Assistant O A G, Ms. Feinberg, affirmed this upon speaking with her. John, chapter eight, thirty-two, and you will know the truth, and the truth will set you free. On November seventh, two thousand twenty-two, Washington City Paper headlines read, "D C H A cancels emergency meeting to discuss fate of Director and Executive, and Executive Leadership." The first line, line under the headline read, quote, "Two of D C H A Director Brenda Donald's top deputies were put on leave last week following results of an internal audit that found fraud, procurement, um, found procurement fraud," end quote. Proverbs, tw- chapter twenty-nine, seven, "A righteous man knows the rights of the poor. A wicked man does not understand such knowledge," end quote. The HUD report reflects a lot of mismanagement, neglect, non-compliance, and fraud. It is appalling that D C H A continues to fail the public as a whole when you accept funding that is supposed to be used to support public housing and H C P, H C V P voucher residents. I only see a few commissioners on this board that actually, that actually are in support of the residents, care about the voices of the residents, the conditions the residents reside in, the deals that are being made in regard to the redevelopments and how things are being handled. I have said this time and time again, you have a chance to right the wrongs. Do it now before it's too late. Thank you. I'm Ms. Shante Ha, the Equity Activist, Voice of the People, and the Lifetime President of the Council at Park Morton. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Ms. Ha, for your testimony. Um, next is Ms. Dorita Harrison. Ms. Dorita Harrison. You can proceed. I can see you're unmuted, Ms. Harrison. Okay, I'll move on. Uh, Ms. Patricia Bishop, Ms. Bishop?
Good afternoon, everyone. First, I'm gonna speak about Greenleaf. As a president here, I asked that commissioner set up a meeting and a date with me to come and do a walkthrough, a complete walkthrough from bottom to top. Director Donalds, I would appreciate if you get this done, because the conditions behind these closed doors are affecting our health. And it has been for years, and before these pictures get released to the media, I'm giving y'all once again a fair chance to see what we see. When these doors are left open, it's unacceptable, not just a couple of weeks, how about over years of seeing the same thing? Destroying from unborn to the oldest. Heart, mind, brain, lungs, everything that is given to function is being destroyed under these living conditions in this building. Now, I'm finished as Resident Council President, but as the tenant, my ancestors, my people, my angels, I don't worship the devil. And I speak nice and I speak nasty, because when I'm fed up, I'm fed up. The negotiations of everything else besides the tenants is not just a blank disrespect. It's a retaliation. I told y'all. Don't let me tell you. I told you so. While somebody's watching me, somebody is watching you. We shouldn't have to get up here and beg and beg and beg and beg to get some better living conditions that we was promised, that we was entitled to? Fair and equal housing. Fifty-dollar signs in our lives before you stick somebody's pocket that's already greased. Can I get a amen up in here? Or do I have to pay and give it all to the press and the media, then fight for my tenants, that I will not give their names? I will not let them be retaliated on, and I'm looking forward to the retaliation coming at me because I got all the rights that will protect me, being a senior and a disabled, and y'all failure to accommodate year after year after year, the decency of respect besides their obligations to the mayor and the uppity up dollar signs. Disagreeing, well, and not answering what should be answered to us first? Oh, baby, let them come and get me. Let them come and get me. And I'm finished.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Uh, next is Lakeisha Taylor. Lakeisha Taylor, are you on the line? Okay, I'll move on. That concludes our residents. We'll go on to our non-residents. Uh, first, we have, uh, DeShalonda Hamilton. Ms. Hamilton, are you on the line? Okay, I'll continue. Mr. Craig London. Mr. London, are you on?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed. You have three minutes.
Okay, thanks. Um, just real quick here, um, I would like to make a suggestion for one of the problems that I heard. Um, I'm a, a landlord. I, I have about a hundred or so, uh, voucher tenants in my buildings. Um, one of the best thing, the D, best things that D C H A has done over the past couple of years is they have a program, uh, called a Meet and Lease. I, I don't know if Director Donald or any of her staff that are on the line here are aware of that. But it is a really, really great, uh, thing that's been instituted where it's basically a matchmaking WebEx where landlords and tenants with vouchers that are seeking housing, um, can, the, the landlords get to advertise their units. And so because of the fact that they're advertising, you know the unit is available in real time. You're not getting stale data. And then the tenants that are on the call obviously are actively looking, and it, they're sorted out by bedroom size. So all the three bedrooms would go on a certain WebEx, all the two-bedroom, the, the landlords with two bedrooms would go on another WebEx. And I would encourage, um, D C H A and Director Donald to do more of these. Right now, there may be a couple of times a month. It's, it's really infrequent. And I would, I would suggest to do it every Saturday and then one weeknight per week. And, uh, I think it's a really, it would be a low-cost way to get a lot of friction, uh, in this matchmaking between what landlords have, uh, properties that are currently, uh, uh, available and what tenants are currently looking for something. Um, right now, it's, it's, it's just not, they don't happen enough, but it's a really great way to do it. It's called a meet and lease. Second is just more of a general request for the commissioners and D C H A Director Donald and staff. I, I would strongly encourage you to, um, more strictly enforce the requirements of tenants to, um, to follow the rules regarding having a voucher or if they live in, um, public housing. In my experience, about two percent of my tenants account for twenty to thirty percent of my variable operating costs. And I would imagine that D C H A has similar numbers if they do an analysis. The, the worst of the worst, the bottom two percent, create chaos, destroy property, bring in crime. The goal is to protect the other ninety-eight percent of the families. Um, just the threat of having a voucher revoked will go a long way to, um, having some accountability and improving behavior. So again, this is a very, very low-cost way to improve, uh, customer satisfaction, to have buildings in bad neighborhoods in Ward Seven and Eight be looked at as safe havens. If we can just get rid of some of the worst of the worst that are violating the terms of their vouchers, and you have so many people on the waiting list that would actually appreciate this, this coupon they have for free rent for life. Why not give it to somebody that is really going to be appreciative of that versus the ones that are violating the rules? And again, I'm referring to two percent in, in order to protect. in, in order to protect the other ninety-eight percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. London. Uh, next, we have Dakota Cruz. Dakota Cruz. I see the name on the line. Are you able to unmute?
Yes, hello?
Yes, please continue. You have three minutes.
Uh, and that's unfortunate I got three minutes because when I actually was in, uh, one of y'all properties, which was, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get the names out. The Tyler House, right across the street, we all could see right out of our windows. I was living there for seven years, even during the renovations of that property. Um, what, what moved me to leave, I mean, my grandmother got sick right just before COVID, but I was going to come back, well, moved me to not come back, was the fact that the crime rate has went up since certain quarters closed all the way down. And y'all started to make the new developments across the street. And from two thousand twenty up until now, I have been, I've been trying to reach out to several people through HUD, through DCHousing Authority. Uh, me and my kids, me and my five kids were homeless since two thousand and twenty, after I left the Tyler House. I've been on the Section Eight waiting list for thirteen years. Have not got a phone call back yet. But it's unfortunate I only get three minutes because I mean, I, I was actively living at the Tyler House, you know, with the rats and roaches and all of that good stuff inside the building. I'm not one of these, uh, and I hate to say it. I don't mean, people may get offended. I'm not one of these wetting mothers sitting around. I'm actually a college graduate who's trying to make it out here for me and my five kids. But this housing thing is a, is a heavy crisis that we all know that needs to either stop or everything just need to be free. Housing should be free at this point. The food prices are crazy, gas is crazy. Housing should be free. That's my three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Uh, next on the list is Fern Collins. Fern Collins. Okay, I'll move on. Uh, Mr. Jordan, William Jordan. I have you down for general comments. Mr. Jordan, are you still there?
I'm still here. Um, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll continue. Um, and last for non-residents is Imani Reed. Imani Reed. Okay, uh, Madam Chair, that concludes our testimony list.
Thank you. We have no further comments. That concludes our meeting for today. Wanted to give updates on our next scheduled meeting that will actually be held, another virtual meeting that will be held December the seventh. I'm sorry, December the fourteenth. I'm sorry, December the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The time is now three thirty-one PM. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Staff, you can sign one right away for the debrief.